Ready to begin?
Ready.
Okay. All right, well, welcome everyone. We will call this meeting to order. This is a joint session, as you can see, for our airport between the cities of Guthrie and Edmund. I don't know how this works exactly over the joint, but you have to say the same thing, or is it?
Well, I have to call it. It's not controlled there, so we'll call it the word we have for it. We can proceed.
Okay.
So now it's up to you because you're in your backyard, therefore you don't get to run the show.
Go ahead and go ahead and say it. I'm kidding. We need to do this. I don't know. We probably. We need some people, too. Okay. Well, then, yes, again officially, I will call this meeting to order. We have Cora on our side. I will introduce our councilman and staff. Starting here on the left and working our way over, we have Councilwoman Zanigis. Right here, we have Councilman Ryan Boffroyd. We have Councilman Tracy Williams. Well, Councilman, we have Councilman Grant DeGery. And then, working our way back around with our staff, we have, of course, love you to that, Eddie, or?
Yes, absolutely.
Again, right here between us, we have Tim Biggs, our treasurer, and Court Clerk. And then, right here, we have William Wheeler, our city clerk.
All right. Let me introduce.
Two seconds.
Oh, sorry. Well, I was going to do any last because he was going to talk. I mean, really, we're not. But we'll say, we'll say, it's any part of our city management.
Small role.
Yeah, it's a small role. So wait till we all had it, and then swing it over to me as he spoke. Okay.
And yourself, man.
Yeah. And then, obviously, I am Adam Rocky, Mayor.
So, it's exciting, I think, to be here and actually have a joint meeting, talk about the airport. So with us today, we have, to my left, is Councilman from Ward Four, Phil Frank, and from Ward Three, Preston Blockerson. And Councilman Barry Moore is out of town, or he's supposed to be out of town. And Councilman Maggie Murdock Nichols had another meeting that she didn't get out of today. Staff-wise, I'll go ahead and introduce. Randy Gins, our interim city manager, first.
Okay. That'd be awesome.
I believe in Lady Church important people.
No.
We also have our city clerk, Corey Ashison Coley. I did see somewhere, I saw Kathy. Are you back there?
Just waiting.
Kathy Pannas, our director of finance. And we've got a few other staff here, then back there, too. Casey Moore, Madison, Katie. Y'all just raise your hands up like those who you are. Did you introduce your board members?
No, sorry, do that next.
Okay. You want to introduce your board members first?
Yes, two of our councilmembers are also on the board. We have Grant DeGery right here, which I'm sure all of you know. Tracy Williams as well. We also have Ryan Wallace, I think, over here, and then Alex, I went right there. And then, not just as Ryan Husky, who will make it today. I also have staff as well. We have Shonda Rhea. I can't see the Shonda Rhea. Okay. Our economic development director. We have Justin Fordney, our tourism director. And then, we have Dan Kasek that heads up our planning department. And then, we also. Oh, gosh. I want to get the roll-in three minutes before we start. Our police chief, Chief Sager. Also, our fire chief, Kate Lawson. Is anybody right here listening?
No.
That's everyone.
Katie.
And then, last but not least, the most important person today for us is Kate Young, our airport director.
Didn't name the two board members, remember, Stan and Paul. I've got that introduction.
Oh, okay.
So, and for that one on the airport board is Sam Young. Stand back from the back. Walt Strong, or Walt? I thought he was here, too. There's Walt. And then, did guys, Nick sitting on the back row.
Yep. Did we miss anybody? Hey, I'll throw Aaron Ryberg in there, who runs our video.
I will. They missed one in my office as well. Okay. Have we missed anybody at this moment? Okay.
All right, we're good. All right, we'll move to item number two. All right, so we just did item number three, the presentation and discussion of the partnership between the city of Guthrie and the city of Edmund and the management and development of the Guthrie-E Edmund Regional Airport, including the roles and commitments outlined in the joint airport operating agreement effective through June 30th, 2044. Kate Young, airport director.
Good morning, Mayor and councils. Not every day you get to say that in a plural sense, but we're excited to welcome you to our facility. This facility, Brady Technology Center, is also our airport facility later today. I also want to thank Scott and his team at Brady and Tech for allowing us to utilize this space this morning. I'm going to give an overview of the airport and its operations, and then we will hear from two more speakers. My goal today is to get us adjourned by 10:45 so that we can head over to hangars number two. This will give everyone time to settle in, and then we'll have a ribbon-cutting event at 11:00, 11:15. For those interested, there will also be flights available as well that depart the airport back to the event. They'll depart the airport, swing over by Arcadia Lake, and come back just so they can get that pilot experience, that visitors that come in and visit both communities every day. Won't focus too much on history today. I know it's just a little after 9:00 a.m. The airport began as an emergency air mail ground share back beside a concrete arrow on site that points towards Stillwater, operated as the Guthrie Municipal Airport from the mid-1940s until the joint partnership of Edmund and get to a second. This photo really acts one of the highlights. Some of these features Guthrie Mayor Arthur Nelson, the city manager and FAA representative. The gentleman on the far right is the, was the airport manager at the time. His name is Stock Nelson. I'm still aspiring to be as cool as he was. I'll get there one day. Also, I want to talk about the partnership between both cities, of course. In 2004, both cities recognized the necessity and value of having an airport right in your backyard. We did something rare. We created a partnership that, these gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, but a partnership like ours doesn't exist anywhere else in the state. Probably a few examples can be found anywhere in the United States. This is a very special partnership with the airport, and I think that speaks to the airport's importance as well. We formed the airport board, which renamed the Guthrie-E Edmund Regional Airport. Since then, we've been able to accomplish a runway expansion, corporate hangar development, apron expansion, and taxiway developments together. All of these projects have built the airport into the regional driver of economic growth that it is today. Now, I'm going to throw a lot of information at you just to give you a large overview of the airport. We have over 60 hangar spaces, which contributes to our large amount of base aircraft. In 2023, the state airport organization can pilot base aircraft data on our airport, and we've consistently been ranked in the top five in terms of the number of aircraft. That's a lot of pilots that are choosing base aircraft right in our community. We're a popular option. We're right outside the OKC metro with easy access I-35, and we're positioned right outside of what can be a congested class Charlie airspace. Earlier this year, we implemented a tracking software that provides this data so that we can make more informed decisions about where our visitors are and what amenities we can be expected to provide. We're still estimating that we'll have a little more than 20,000 operations in 2025. We'll talk about the taxiway project later. That is going to provide some impacts to those estimates, but we had no idea exactly what level of traffic we were experiencing at the airport until we began tracking this data. In 2017, the director already is missing at the ODAA, embarked on an ambitious project. I won't get too much into the weeds, as he may want to tell it, but they performed an in-depth economic analysis study that found that our airport contributes $19.2 million in economic activity. They just conducted a 2025 study. We'll see the results of that later this year. That was significant for an airport our size, and that study also found that aviation and aerospace is the second-largest large industry in the state. And so, we play an important role for that here in Central Oklahoma. I did put together these photos to demonstrate just how many different operations and businesses are active in a single day at the airport. Zipco Aeronautics, an aircraft and parts manufacturer, has produced multiple Zipco-based aircraft right here in Guthrie. They are also the airport's largest employer, with a staff a little over 30. The regularly seen touchdown operations from the T-sixes from vans. I would also have medical transport services and jet chargers. We're a very busy airport. Another point of pride is the amount of pilots that are in their certifications here. A handful of pilots are taking advantage of the multiple flight schools located at the airport, earning their certifications to go on to be professional pilots who are just pick-up new hobby. I would be remiss if I also didn't mention the jobs at the airport. We have line service professionals, aircraft maintenance, pipe control. I already mentioned Zipco employees, our employees, flight instructors. There's all kinds of different business activities going on, and all of that's contributing to the $19.2 million. I also did want to take a moment real quick and brag on our new FBO. FBO stands for fixed base operator. It's kind of like the airport's gas station, so to speak, but they provide other essential aircraft services. For 50 years, we had the same FBO out of the airport. Visitors were regularly getting the same experience for 50 years, and for an airport like ours with a single FBO, that's a huge partnership for our airport to undertake. In 2023, our FBO operator retired, and that was 50 years of what I call institutional knowledge at the airport that left. We have a new FBO now. Her name is Apex Aero Center. We'll tour their facilities later today in the airport. They came in and renovated a lot of it. The professional, have more professional upload professional tire every day, and their contacts have brought a lot of increases in fuel sales. In the first year of operations, they doubled fuel sales as compared to the previous FBO. In 2023, for example, jet fuel use in jet engines made up 34% of our fuel flow revenue. This, that was the old FBO. In 2024, when Apex started, jet fuel made up 43%. So far this year, jet fuel has consisted of 53% of our operations. And that's not because the other types of fuel are not being sold as much. They're selling way more than double fuel. There's an increase in that much jet traffic. And so, we're seeing a lot more jet traffic at the airport, and we're glad to have them as a, as a community partner in that way. Didn't want to do a breakdown of base aircraft. Both Guthrie and Edmund derive enormous use from the airport. Nearly 62% of our base aircraft, our long-term tenants, have an Edmund address. Nearly 20% have a Guthrie address, and the rest are split evenly between the Logan and Oklahoma County areas. The big questions I often get are, where are these visitors going after they arrive? The most significant increases in traffic are aligned to the schedule at the Lazy Arena, actually. In fact, if DeGery will take the Lazy Bees' schedule and then overlap our schedule of busiest times, they probably would align perfectly on top of each other. But we also have numerous businesses that utilize the airport for their operations, such as United Turf and Track, Madely Mechanical, Diversified Construction. A lot of these larger companies based in both Guthrie and Edmund rely on the airport to do their everyday business. These visitors, in turn, are generating sales tax revenue. They're staying in nearby hotels. They're hopefully purchasing fuel from their plane at the airport. It's critical that we attract these kinds of visitors so that when they are seeking a less congested airport outside of OKC, Guthrie-E Edmund Airport comes to mind as the option they want to be. There are two primary revenue sources from the airport, such as ours. The first is hangar ground lease revenue. So, we, as the city, own all of the property. And how it typically works is a private developer will come in and construct a hangar, and in return for that, we get hangar ground lease revenue. That accounts for 46% of our revenue, just about. The other form of revenue primarily at our airport is fuel flow speed revenue. And so, whenever I said earlier about visitors stopping in and buying gas, we, as a city, are collecting a portion of that. And I did want to mention that whenever we are collecting these revenues, our goal is, as is every airport, is self-sustainability. Right now, we have a long ways to go to get there. For about two, three months a year, we actually produce enough revenue to cover all of our expenses, and so, we don't have to build either city. For the rest of the year, we are. And so, our goal is to get that slowly up to six months, and then finally get to the point where, when my office is coming to Guthrie Council or Edmund Council, I'm only asking for a local match to support large-scale projects that we probably couldn't have done on our own. The goal is self-sustainability.
Kayden, that's a great point. I want to jump in there.
Yeah.
Talking about the operating costs of the airport and the annual economic activities, give us, just for the group, give us a quick glimpse of what that looks like. And that may be your next slide, so if I'm ahead of you, I'm sorry.
Very. Historically, the allowances to the airport for both cities have been $150,000 to $200,000. I think this last year is going to be $300,000 each, solely because we're pursuing a lot of capital projects. But we turned that $150,000 per city into a $19.2 million in annual economic activity. So, this relatively small amount is deriving a lot of benefit and results that are proven at the airport. Later on, actually, the next slide, I am going to talk about the grant portion. And we'll really see how a small amount of dollars can make, we can make a lot more out of the airport. The FAA, I put that in red, provides 90% to 95% of our federal funding. So, this, this bar graph here, this is just to illustrate whenever we go after, like, a new terminal or a new taxiway or putting in a new road, what that funding structure typically looks like. Very rare are you going to be able to consistently hit a 90% to 95% coverage from the federal government. Grayson's office at the ODAA, they typically will match with the city. They'll provide 5%. I put them here in yellow. And so, by the time it gets to a local match for us to come after these projects, I put Guthrie in green and Edmund in blue. That is the cost share that we typically see. And just to provide some examples of what this actually translates into, right now, we're removing and replacing 3,000 feet of taxiway and installing LED lights. That project's total cost is $5.7 million, large number. Each city is only providing $142,000 for that project. So, in return for $142,000 from both cities, we're getting a $5.7 million infrastructure upgrade. So, that's huge. Another example is our fencing project. We're installing over 8,000 meter feet of fence, fencing the entire east side of the airport. The total project cost for that, excuse me, was $400,000, and the total cost per city was $10,700. So, for a completely new fence on the, on the east side, we're spending a little less than $11,000. We couldn't buy a commercial-grade mower at the airport for that cost. We're getting an entirely new fence. And so, this is just to illustrate what we can do whenever we put money towards the airport. We'll get a very, very substantial return on investment, and we're, we're getting a heck of a deal from our federal and state partners. Before I wrap up, I also wanted to review some of the events that happen at the airport each year. Unfortunately, we couldn't host this event this year. It typically occurs in this month. This is our annual fly-in and community day. We typically will show off display aircraft, bring all kinds of vendors, kids' activities. The EAA will actually provide free flights for this event. We are looking forward to expanding this event, offering new activities. We hosted Visit Edmund a few months ago. We want the community of both Guthrie and Edmund to utilize this airport, get to come out to these events and see what their community is supporting. Also, want to talk about the Summer Flight Camp. We've hosted that since 2017. We'll typically host 20, 25 kids in the community aged age 12. These kids typically come from disadvantaged backgrounds. They're not going to experience aviation and aerospace otherwise that participate. We've had great success with this program. This program is also funded in partnership with the ODAA, and so, they have consistently helped with aviation and education, and that's a huge thing. I spoke earlier about the pilots continually earning our certifications at our airport. That's something that we're investing in when they're done so we can keep general aviation alive, keep aircraft mechanics, air traffic control, pilots, airport managers, all the like. Get those kids interested. Finally, to wrap up, Santa Fly-In hosted in December is a special event as well. We do not have a solid date yet for this year, but we'll typically have Santa will fly into the airport, and a bunch of kids will line up to stand, and all take photos. Super fun event happening later this year. We hope you can, hope you can join us. And then, I will, to conclude here, I was going to have the both mayors to move to the next section. We're going to switch up some of the, some of the PowerPoint slides, and we can come right back, and I'll introduce the speaker.
Okay. I have a question, okay?
Absolutely.
You say that the aeronautics is the second most popular industry in Oklahoma, right? Or the second largest? Yeah. What is that based on? That's amazing.
What is that? What was that?
Yeah, like, what is the, what is, when you say it's the second largest industry in Oklahoma? Like, what is that based on, to make it the larger, second largest?
I think the state director probably would be more.
Yeah, okay.
Their department did that, they spent probably over a year working on that study back in 2017.
Okay. Good. Well, I'll get that answer in the next round, I think. So, you want to go ahead and move on to item number four?
Yeah, if there aren't any more, if there aren't any questions.
Anybody? Okay. All right. Item number four, a presentation and discussion on the Guthrie-E Edmund Regional Airport's impact on regional and state growth within the Oklahoma night airport system. Do you want to repeat it as well, or is that?
No.
I'm not sure the legal proceeding out, it's just a go.
I assume you can check, but.
And forgive me if I pronounced your name wrong. It's Grayson Ar- Ardis? All right. Awesome. Executive Director, Department of Aerospace and Airline.
I was going to introduce the mayor.
Oh.
You're good. You're good.
I have it on the bottom of the, of the agenda.
Our next speaker has been Executive Director of the Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Aeronautics since November 2020, and CEO of the Oklahoma Space Industrial Development Authority since July 2025. This guy. Director Ardis has worked for the ODAA since 2009. He graduated from the University of Oklahoma, at the Oklahoma Davidson, with a degree in aviation management, with double minors in business and air traffic control. He also has a commercial pilot's license with CBL and multi-engine instrument ratings and also certified flight shirt. So, now, welcome Director Ardis to the seat.
All right. Good morning, everybody. And I guess I'm on camera, so I can't walk right. That wouldn't be easy for you to do. Okay. I'm a walker and a talker, so I'd rather just take the microphone out and walk around. But I'll, I'll try and stay put for, for a, for a quick minute here. But good to see everybody. Glad to have this meeting convened. I know we've talked about this, Kayden and Eddie, and Eddie's predecessor for, for years, it seems like. How can we get the two governing bodies of Edmund and Guthrie together? And I guess the most important information of the day is here in about two and a half weeks, I'll be joining the citizenry of the great city of Edmund. So, I'll be joining your ranks on October 1st. So, anyway, I decided to, decided to be moving to Edmund. But moving back to my, my, in my younger years. But aviation aerospace, I might be a little bit biased. It's probably the most exciting thing happening here in the great state of Oklahoma. We have a lot of interesting activities, a great diverse set of activities happening within this industry. And Mr. Mayor, I'll do my best to answer your question of, of why is this? How is this? Where is this second-largest industry within our, our segment? So, I'll give you a little history, a little background. We're going to cut my two-hour speech down here to get it out here by 10:45. This was some of the early, some of the early guys in 1906. Unfortunately, this one didn't make it. I thought it showed the story of the airplane, whether or not that was a good or a bad thing. I don't know if that airplane would have been able to make flight. But in 1910, we did. We achieved first flight Oklahoma in 1910. Charles Willard, first plane, first plane to fly in the great state of Oklahoma, flew 50 feet altitude for three-quarters of a mile. Second day, 50 minutes more into the pile. Pretty ageers, Maroon, go, well, that's, that's just approach to park. That's really not that exciting. Think about how far we've come. From, from that time period to the 60s, we went from seconds of flight, hundreds of feet of flight, to making it to the moon in three days. Truly transformational how fast aviation grew. And I want us to think about how fast aviation grew because Guthrie and the Great Eastern Airport took on a very similar trajectory for about two decades, from the early 2000s to today. So, Clyde Sessa, I know we have some economic development chamber professionals in the world. We do great in economic development here in Oklahoma. Unfortunately, this is one that we lost. Clyde Sessa did his testing up there in North West Oklahoma, Great Salt Plains. Of course, we know, anybody knows about Sessa's aircraft, they end up going to Wichita, Kansas, where their manufacturing happens currently. What really gave our aviation aerospace industry the boost and the boon that it is is oil and gas. Oil and gas and the, the folks, the grandfathers, the forefathers of oil and gas said, how can we get out to the oil fields to repair our equipment? How can we get our experts out to the oil fields to figure out where to drill? How can we get to the bank first and lease that piece of property for new development? Aircraft was the fastest way. Anybody knows about surface transportation back in the 20s and 30s? Knew that surface transportation wasn't great. So, they fly airplanes in, land on a county road, land in the middle of the field, and be able to do their operations. And of course, Phillips Petroleum, Frank Phillips, early days, helped spur on some of that by funding various aeroplanes across the country, across the world. We know about the Willy May, Wiley Post, send sites on around the world in eight days. Wiley Post was also one of Frank Phillips and the forefathers of oil and gas, one of their first aviator and first pilots. Business aviation was born right here in Oklahoma because of the oil and gas industry. We obviously know Will and Wiley had a great close connection, two great statesmen for Oklahoma. Of course, we know their demise was hit when they flew on that fateful flight in Alaska. And that was going to show you that aviation, aviation was learned. We were experienced with true blood, sweat, and tears back in the day. Today, it's a much safer form of flying, safest form of transportation out there. Wasn't always that way. We've learned a lot from the folks that came before us. Now, we go to the 40s, and this is where we really catapulted. This is what was the foundation, Mr. Mayor, of aviation aerospace. World War II really is what caused and created our aviation aerospace. Yes, there was industry happening beforehand. Yes, there were airports out there. There was air transportation, there was air mail, there was commercial transportation, there was business aviation happening. But World War II is really what set the foundation for our success, particularly when a little place called Tinker Air Force Base, then the Midwest Air Depot was created. That's what started the aviation aerospace, or it's not for Oklahoma, largest single-sized player today. 1943, as World War II started really ginning up, a lot more airports at that time, or airports today, harken their history back to World War II. Muskogee, Eden, Chickasha, Lina, Woodward, Stillwater, Granite, Ardmore. There's probably two dozen-plus airports in operation today that were former military bases in World War II. And that's not all of them. There were plenty that are closed and are not operational today. Just after World War II, as the men and women were coming back from the warfighting efforts, our agency was created. How can we transition these skills that these men and women have created and achieved in wartime? How can we transition them into a civilian in a commercial world and take advantage of that? So, we lost Sessa, bad economic development deal. We had two great economic development deals in 1946. American Airlines Maintenance Base, largest commercial maintenance operation facility in the world, moved from LaGuardia in New York to also Oklahoma. Five, six thousand employees today, largest civilian MRO facility. To match with large military's MRO facility in Tinker Air Force Base. 1946, the Civil Aeronautics Administration, this is a predecessor to the FAA as we know it today, had their standardization center moved to Texas, moved to Oklahoma City, later named FAA Month Night in Aurora, the center after Senator Niroda, who crafted the FAA bill after some of those fateful flights across the Grand Canyon. You know the aviation history, you know how the Federal Aviation Administration was created. Anytime we can steal something from the state of New York and the state of Texas, we did that. 1946 was a great year for the state of Oklahoma. Won't belabor this because you've seen the timeline slide, but just some, some great neat pictures from that era of aviation. American Airlines Maintenance Base, that hangar is still seen also in Oklahoma. It looks a little different though. So now here we are today. We are in a renaissance of aviation aerospace across the state of Oklahoma. Now I won't go through all of these. They're just bold points, just items along the timeline, a continuum of continued success. But our legislature has been able to bestow upon our agency and other agencies across the state of Oklahoma to support aviation aerospace throughout our great state. It's our second largest industry. Forty-four billion dollars a year annual economic activity. Two hundred and six thousand total jobs, about a hundred and twenty thousand of those are direct jobs employed directly in the industry. Eleven hundred different companies. Engineering, MRO is our bread and butter. MRO being maintenance prepared overall. That's what we do best in the state of Oklahoma. We keep our planes flying. We're not flashy, fancy and sexy like Boeing in Seattle, or Boeing in South Carolina, or Airbus in Alabama, or the general aviation, business aviation manufacturers in Wichita. We don't build new things in Oklahoma in terms of new fully manufactured planes. We keep our airplanes flying. That's a great spot to be because when the coun- when the economy of the country goes down, when we have this roller coaster ride that we're on from time to time of our economy or our country, you can choose not to buy an airplane. Commercial airliners choose that, corporate flat partners choose that, personal individuals choose not to buy their planes because their economy may not be doing well. But you don't have the choice not to not maintain your airplane. It's not like a car where you can say, well, budget's, budget hurts a little bit, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna lay that little change to a thousand miles and try and ride out of that. Seeing some, some rub on those tires, I'm just gonna try and get another five thousand miles out of those tires. You can't do that big nation. You have a dedicated timeline that you must maintain your airplane on. And so that's why when in two thousand eight, we had the Great Recession, Wichita had to lay off thirty, forty thousand people, Oklahoma, then just one. In our aviation aerospace industry, because people still have to maintain their aircraft. So we have a great balance between public and private sector industries and aviation aerospace. Generates just the airport. So we look at three different sectors, and this is kind of where you may start seeing how we're able to formulate this forty-four billion dollars a year second largest industry for the state of Oklahoma. People always saw, well, you have military aviation over here, you have commercial and general aviation over here, and you have this aviation industrial complex that supports both kind of in the middle. And everybody looking at it individually, it's all aviation aerospace. It's all the same industry. It's all the one together industry. And so we put all that together, all three of those buckets, so to speak, aviation, aerospace and defense. That is how we got to the second largest industry. The airport bucket, the commercial and general aviation airport bucket, we might look at the tax code, the tax revenues. Almost half a billion dollars in tax revenues. They come back to the state of Oklahoma, both to the state coppers and to local coppers based on this. And the split's about sixty-five, thirty-five percentualized in terms of what comes back to the state and what comes back to our calories. Just a couple of statistics there. At any given time, there's over sixty thousand people up in the air across our United States. You've seen, I've heard you go, go home, look at YouTube and see the, the day in the life of an air traffic controller and see all the flights first crossing our country. Uh, it's about a thirty second video. They speed up a day, a thirty second tour, a pretty deep. So we're directly funded by users of the system up until about two thousand twenty-two, about four years ago. We were directly funded by the usual system. Then let's like just say, you know what? We want to double down on this aviation aerospace thing. We wanna, how can we help support aviation aerospace at a clip that we've never seen before, right? Started getting a general revenue funds at twenty twenty-one section, FY twenty-two. Uh, we got our first general appropriation of two million dollars. And that is a period of foundation which we're gonna be able to be successful up, up here in this manner. The four main categories that we're focused on as an agency, airports, aerospace industry, workforce development, and aviation safety integrating these new technologies. And of course, you've heard Kayden, uh, Kayden say that, uh, as of July first, we now have the spaceport in our agency. We operate the spaceport in western Oklahoma and making sure all of space industries affiliated to across the state. Running a couple of airports like the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. You guys are known as a national business airport, one only a few across the state. This is your classification, your category, the top category airport. You guys are a great airport. Here's some statistics. And Kayden mentioned this, nineteen point two million dollars annual economic activity in business in twenty seventeen. Again, we're currently going through a new study right now. Hope to have those numbers released by the end of the year, early twenty twenty-six. This was just a snapshot of the IFR, that's instrument flight rules. That's when you, uh, uh, it's cloudy outside and you can't see where you're going when you're on instrument flight plan. This is where you guys have been able to departure and arrivals from in twenty twenty, in twenty seventeen. See how many different states that are attached there by activity from Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. And then for all my friends and helpers in the room. Yes, now I guess we'll, if we can't, oh. Won't be able to show the, uh, the point, but the top left there, that breaks it out between income spending, payroll, employment, directed direct. That gives you all the juicy data of what the economic impact side of it is from all of that. So your airport role, the system plan, the role of the airport, that national business role goes to show what, what you're expected to have as an airport to serve the community, to serve the state of Oklahoma, to serve our national aerospace system. This is a little bit of an I chart test, but as you can see there, here's some of the things that we would expect at a national business airport. Some of the things that we're currently working on. I know Toby will just mention here in a minute about making sure that we have these amenities provided, traveling public, provided, business aviation. So just some accomplishments at a glance. In FY twenty-five, the legislature gave us another round of funding. In twenty-two, you already mentioned we started with too many dollars. We started a hand program. We've never have funded hangers in the history as far back as we can find. We were focused on pavement, lights, safety, and the occasional terminal building. Prior to twenty twenty-one, the legislature gave us general appropriated revenues. We had done about eight terminal buildings in our history. Severed till saving, sorry, charming. And it wasn't their fault. It was in the mother nature's fault. Well, they had a couple of years ago, took it out. In the fall of twenty twenty-two, the legislature came back in special session and said, what are we gonna do with this one point eight trillion dollars of ARPA money? Where we're gonna spread that out to the community. They said, you know, we have some, we have some infrastructure we want to do that we know is not eligible for ARPA. So we're gonna, we're gonna bring two or fifty million dollars of state money to the table. We're gonna combine out the one point eight trillion dollars of ARPA we got from our federal government for COVID recovery. And we're gonna put that money into play in the state of Oklahoma. Between ARPA and PREP, over two hundred and fifty million dollars went into aviation aerospace across our state. Hundred million of that came to our agency for major projects, hanger projects, major economic development projects at four airports across the state. And right now, we are getting, right now, our current annual revenues about fifteen million dollars from legislature for general appropriations. That doesn't count all the special one-time monies that they've nailed to divide us over the years. We are doing things that I never would have envisioned in my wildest dreams. And why I tell you that's not to, it's not to boast, it's not to, to, to tell you we're great. It's, it's to take, take advantage of that. Now is the opportunity. Strike while the iron is hot. Because I don't know how long this will continue. I hope it does forever and ever, but you just never know in today's climate. Some of the FY twenty-four projects that we're already completing, we had three fuel systems installed, twenty-two different hangers built, four line-up projects, thirty thousand, five, six miles of runway rehab, and eight different taxiway aprons replaced. So you've heard me say that, you know, we did eight terminal buildings, eight to nine terminal buildings from the beginning of when we started doing terminals in twenty twenty-one. We have replicated that exact amount today. So if we, for about, we call it a fourteen year time period, eight to nine terminals, we've done eight to nine terminals in about a four to five year time period. Thanks to the legislature and done one of those, hopefully soon to be, that you got to reend in a terminal. Some of the progress infrastructure projects that we've been able to tap into over these, over this time period. You guys have a, a terminal project that's slated. We also have a taxiway project that's slated for, for work. Thanks for some of the monies the legislature could have given us. The ARPA crack infrastructure, that, those one-time monies that were provided to us in the, uh, fall of twenty twenty-two. Got it across the state of Oklahoma, hanger programs, those four projects at Woodward, Ardmore, uh, Will Rogers and Tulsa International. We got nine special projects that were allocated to us in the, uh, twenty twenty-four legislature section, FY twenty-five funding. These are those five projects that you can see there. We just, uh, just broke ground on the South Green Lake Terminal and Hanger, uh, last week. Okie was underway, their hanger projects, we're gonna celebrate those next week. Shawnee is underway with some of their tornado recovery efforts. One of the things that we really do is, is harping back to our state legislature. They have been extremely supportive of the aviation aerospace industry prior to providing the funding that they've given us. They have provided policy support, tax credits, regular, regular floor restrictions to protect military training airspace. You know, they've done a lot for us and they're a great supporter, a great contributor to the aviation aerospace industry. As you heard me say, MRO capital world, that's what we're best known for is working on those airplanes that those two ladies are working on right there. We partner with our friends at the Department of Coppers on a program called ACES, which is specifically designed to go out and get those new companies. They host and, uh, attend a lot of conferences and trade shows, aviation conferences and trade shows throughout the year to try and go out and glean those new companies to come to Oklahoma. They also work with our existing businesses here in the state to try and bring those businesses to expand their current operations. Figure out what they need to be more successful and expand their portfolio. The timeline, we have long since tried to figure out a way to get into Tinker Air Force Base. Tinker Air Force Base has about eight billion dollars a year that they contract out. We keep less than five hundred million dollars here in state. I don't know if that's true, just someone can do the quick math. We have long tried to figure out a way to get more of those Tinker dollars into our community. This isn't just the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. This is the city of Guthrie, city of Edmonds. How can we do better with our companies that are supporting this military industrial complex that is Tinker Air Force Base and the Air Force Segments Center? We've been pretty successful. We've had a lot of wins. We've had a lot of private capital investment generated because of those companies coming to the state or those existing companies that are expanding into Oklahoma. A lot of things, a lot of great things happening in Tinker, a lot of great things happening within the private sector of aviation aerospace industry. Even though we had COVID, COVID hurt. It took down our commercial transport, air transportation system significantly. A lot of our private companies had to lay off employees, but we're making our way back. We are doing a good job getting back to pre-COVID levels. We're exceeding those pre-COVID levels in a lot of respects. I would encourage each one of you to get involved as influential members of your community. We have several events. Our biggest challenge in aviation aerospace defense is that we are the best kept secret in the state of Oklahoma. I grew up here at one rate Oklahoma. I knew about oil and gas, knew about agriculture, knew about being a banker, lawyer, doctor, a mayor. But I didn't know about aviation aerospace. I even had a grandfather who was a pilot, and I still didn't know the depth and the breadth of this industry has for the state of Oklahoma. And so the problem we have is the best kept secret in the world. We can't then relay that to our kids. We encourage them to choose this as a career. We've done a lot better in the last five to ten years than we have in the last thirty, but we continue to take work. We continue to take more effort on everyone's part. Some of the things that we have is related to capital. Go out and celebrate today for aviation aerospace. No, no Guthrie Edmond, just saying that in a lot of ways. We have our aviation aerospace education grant program that Kayden mentioned. We support the, uh, the summer camp. We have a hundred and forty-four high schools around the state of Oklahoma that this year are teaching four-year AOPA curriculum in the classroom. There's another fifteen to twenty that are teaching two-year aviation management program. We have a bunch of career techs out, out around the state of Oklahoma that are doing aviation maintenance training, either full-blown AMP or certificate training. We have universities that have two-year and four-year degrees, engineering, pilot, management, aviation support logistics, you name it. I haven't updated this. This is the, uh, the map from last year because right now we're, we got, we had one school added. Uh, the week before they started a school, they wanted to have an AOPA program. They, they added their program. So I haven't updated this map yet because it has been a really big moving target. But the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, we had a hundred and fourteen schools. This is where they were dotted across the state of Oklahoma. Again, thank you all for having me. I, I hope that, uh, between today's conversation and future conversations that we have, that you'll see the importance of aviation aerospace. You'll see what this airport means, but you'll see what the Grandeur Aerospace Defense Plus Reprint from the state of Oklahoma. This can be economic certainty. Aviation aerospace is not tied to a commodity like oil and gas or agriculture. Two great industries in the state of Oklahoma. Don't want to discount it. But we've seen what happens in the state of Oklahoma when we tie our economy to a commodity-based industry. When times are good, it's great. When times aren't good, it's pretty terrible. I think aviation aerospace can become our state's number one industry, and we hope to fill them by the time we clear out the decade and twenty thirties. That will help support the overall economy of the state of Oklahoma. That's why our state leaders, our governor, the senate governor, our congressional delegation, our two senators or five congressional members. Our entire state legislature, House and Senate, is so all-in on aviation aerospace. Is because they see what this industry can mean to the state of Oklahoma. They see that this can take our state to the promised land of economic certainty for many, many years, many decades to come. So I hope I've made you all and convinced you all to become supportive of aviation aerospace if you weren't already. The airport, the supporting of the airport here is extremely important. As you heard Kayden say, many times it's nickel for a dollar. Sometimes right now it's half a nickel for a dollar. Sometimes it's dime for a dollar. Terminal building is the worst one. It's a dollar for dollar proposition. But at the end of the day, if two communities that you guys are in can find a way to support this airport for the long haul and continue on the path that you bound and continue to increase your support, I can promise you that this will be a economic driver, not just for pilots and aviation activity, but for aviation businesses. And that's why some of the projects we have coming out are slated, likely are slated, is to help develop that aviation business opportunity. You heard Kayden mention one of the biggest growths that they have is, I don't think, compared to one year, Kayden, any of the hangers are owned by the airport. One, one hangar, okay. One hangar is owned by the airport. That is pretty much unlike any airport in the state of Oklahoma. Many airports in the state of Oklahoma, they don't have all their hangers owned by the municipality, but they have half or maybe a quarter or maybe a third or two thirds of the hangers owned by the municipality. Kayden will tell you, getting, once you're down at least twenty cents a square.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two cents a square foot per year compared to three, five, a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars a month rental rate is quite the difference in revenue. And yes, it's gonna require significant upfront investment in that effort. But between the revenue we'll bring back to the airport, hopefully the jobs that we'll bring back to the community and thereby the form of sales taxes, income taxes, property taxes back into the community. We hope that they can be able to build some hangers, be able to help the airport become more self-sufficient. We need more hangers. We need that terminal building to be that beautiful front door to the community of Guthrie Edmond. And so with that, I'll certainly see any questions that you may have. And I hope, uh, hopefully convince you to be a, uh, an air evangelist, as we like to call it, uh, which is spreading the word of, uh.
Director, as I have warned, so a hundred plus airports in the state, um, or GA airport, where, where do we rank? Because I know we've got, the, what I understand, the largest number of base aircraft. That, that puts us number three, number five.
So, so I would call Guthrie Edmond the largest non-towered airport in state. So in terms of the amount of aircraft that you have here. So there's, there's nine, ten, ten airports that have air traffic control towers in the state of Oklahoma. Our four commercial airports, Will Rogers, OKC International, Tulsa, Stillwater, Lawton, all have control towers. And there are six general aviation airports that have control towers as well. Wiley Post, North Westheimer, uh, Eden, Ardmore, uh, Burns Flat in western Oklahoma and Tulsa River Shott. You take those airports off the list, you guys are the largest in terms of base aircraft. You're probably right there in terms of the busiest and competing the busiest title of Durant. Durant's also a non-towered airport. They only have about eighty to ninety base aircraft, but they have a flat, they have a university flat program in there. So you guys, while you, you take the cake in the base aircraft world, under thirty base aircraft, uh, largest general aviation airport. I would say you're, you're by far top ten general aviation airport in the state of Oklahoma in terms of your base aircraft and your operations for certain. And you're the largest base aircraft in a non-towered environment. Uh, you know, the, the tower conversation is something that we don't want to talk about right now, but I wouldn't put it off the radar in that twenty-five, I said maybe twenty-five is a little too far. Maybe that fifteen to twenty year range. If we continue to acquire the property, we continue to build more taxiways, add more hangers built here, and then we go on to the east side of the airport, just to build on the east side of the airport. In that fifteen, twenty year timeframe, I think we might be busy enough to need some kind of controlled air, controlled field environment here. Right now, we're still. Right now, we're still, uh, we're a long ways away from that.
Sir.
No, um, we have some, through maybe this technology center and through ours and them, we have some incubator programs for small businesses, and I think they're tied into ACES. How can we as municipalities work better with the state to kind of grow those things or work together?
So the, the biggest and best thing that you can do for economic development is getting with the existing aerospace aviation companies you have in your communities. You know, we've got a couple of economic development chamber members here, um, and we, as a, we're selling, as a, you guys are selling your communities, but we're, we're, we're small. You took that, there's a, there's a statistic one time that I learned from a previous commerce director. You took every single local economic developer, state economic developer, private, you know, economic developer in state of Oklahoma, and we still would not get some resource of the economic development of huge taxes. So we're, we're, we're already fighting behind from that standpoint. And so the best thing that we can use is our companies. Aviation aerospace is such a small niche field, it's like a family. If, if we are doing a good job supporting our existing companies, they can go out and sell for us. And they may know, they said, hey, you know what, I know, I know Jim over here in company ABC, and, and Jim's sixty-five, and he doesn't have a succession plan, his kids don't want this company, and the community he's in is terrible, they, they hate it. So, well, you may have a company in Oklahoma that will want to acquire that company and move up here. Or, that same frame of mind, they, they want to continue their house of origin or California or some other state that doesn't really love aviation like Oklahoma does, and they want to move to state to this aviation and pro-aviation friendly to the industry. That story repeats itself, I can't say how many times we have companies in Oklahoma that have told their one-day competitor, next-day business partner, hey, Oklahoma is rolling out the red carpet for aviation aerospace, if you're looking for a place to relocate, come to Oklahoma. That, that is the first thing that I would suggest, is getting together with your chamber and, and having an aviation roundtable of what aviation companies you have in Edmond or Guthrie. And just saying, hey, look, we want to grow this airport, we want to grow aviation aerospace in our community, and what do we need to do to be able to do that? How can we support you and your operations and grow your operations, and then how can we expand and grow aviation aerospace in our community? That, that's the best kept secret out there is those existing aviation aerospace industries in your community. And getting with them, figuring out how can they better serve, because then they, then they have a workforce. I can't say how many times I've gone to a company and say, yeah, I've got this workforce problem, I have to find, well, have you talked to a good, well, no, I'm their doctor, why not? Well, I just didn't know. Oh my gosh, let's go talk, six months later they had a ready-made program for you, and they were churning out whatever employees they needed. It's, it's something that's simple, that we just, we're so, Oklahoma, you think it's so small, so tight-knit, but yet sometimes the right hand is open, the left hand is open. And, and because we are so small in state of Oklahoma at the state government level, it takes everybody to help us share that message and kind of spread that word. So, yeah, if you can get a, a conversation going with your local aerospace team, uh, get them engaged with the chamber, get them engaged, if they have a workforce challenge, engage with the, the current tech program. Um, you know, I, I don't know, set, standing up, I know Francis Tuttle, which is, is Edmond, they, they don't have a full-blown AMP program, but they have a lot of certificate programs. They have composites, they have sheet metal, they have, uh, avionics, electronics, and wiring. And those folks can do four to six months of training in Francis Tuttle and immediately go get hired on Tinker Air Force Base. That's, that's a perfect example. Uh, here at, at, at Buridian, I, you know, to stand up a full-blown AMP program is very, very expensive. Go talk to one of them, they just did, they spent, I don't know how many millions of dollars over the last three years standing up their AMP program. It's providing fruits of their labor right now, they have, uh, they're about to graduate their first class, or did just graduate their first class, now they're graduating their second class. Um, so if a, you know, if you guys get a MRO business right here at the airport, that, you know, it's going to be twenty, thirty, forty mechanics, it might make sense for, for Buridian to start up a AMP, or at least an aviation maintenance technology program. And they certainly could if they want to, I mean, you look at Oklahoma City, Gordon Cooper in Shawnee, Canadian Valley in El Reno, uh, Moore Norman, Metro Tech, all have full-blown AMP programs, and then Middel and Francis Tuttle have aviation, aviation maintenance certificate programs. Nothing says in Buridian, here in Guthrie couldn't have aviation certificate or a full-blown AMP program, because at the end of the day, you can, Tinker could always use more aviation technicians. There will never not be an need for aviation technicians at Tinker Air Force Base. So if, if east, west, and central are doing it, there's no reason why north couldn't do it as well.
Director, I have one more question. As a GA airport, how can we support Will Rogers and relieving the traffic? As, as we grow our airport, we want to continue to, to hold that, that top spot, how can we do that in the future?
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't focus on Will Rogers, I would focus on Wiley Post, Sundance, and those kinds of airports. While there's a, a technical term, and while someone knows this, there's a technical term called a reliever airport. And there are two airports that are considered official relievers, in Max Westheimer and Wiley Post. There is no actual relieving that needs to be done with Will Rogers. They're not at, they're not in a capacity problem like a DFWU, or a Newark, or an LAX, or a Chicago, or anything like that, they're not in a true, that, the reliever program, the reliever program was originally intended to relieve capacity at a commercial airport, be all the GA traffic out. And what I would say is the only GA traffic that will Rogers right now are those that, that want to be there because they have hangars there, or because it makes sense for them to fly in to stop us in Oklahoma City, to wherever they're going to go. What I would say is there's a, a clientele that has been at Wiley Post for years and years, or Sundance for years and years, that actually would love to be at Guthrie and Edmond, but one of the problems you guys have is runway strength. That's one of the challenges, you know, there's a, there's a large business jet that would love to be here, and I don't know if they're still in operation since eight, nine years ago. There's a business jet that would love to have been here at Guthrie Regional Airport because the business was in Edmond, and a lot more simplified to be able to operate and have their pilots that lived in Guthrie, uh, one of the pilots that gathered on the hub from Edmond, several of the business executives lived in Edmond. But it was a strength fault. They had an aircraft that had a dual wheel of sixty, seventy thousand pounds, and they weren't, they couldn't cover it, uh, because of the strength and the height of the runway. There's also been conversations about runway length. Strength is solvable, runway length, eh, less solvable. Um, it only, it only takes money on the strength length side, on the length side it takes money and a little courage. Um, and, um, I know sometimes that can be difficult in, in local communities, and I, uh, happy to talk offline with you about, any about that. That's, that's where I would focus my attention is, if, if you could build hangars today and, you know, charge fifteen percent less than what Wiley Post or Sundance is charging, there are people that are probably living in Edmond, living in Guthrie, that are basing their airplane in Wiley Post, or, or in Sundance, or even in Chandler, or, you know, eastern Oklahoma City. Uh, I can't say how many times I've had people complain in Chalk Town about, well, they really need an airport on the west, eastern sides of the community, and we say, well, that's not going to happen, that's Tinker Air Force Base. So at the end of the day, I would focus on trying to bring the traffic that is from Wiley Post, Sundance, eastern Oklahoma City, that might be in Chandler, or Shawnee, or something like that, uh, bring them to Guthrie by spurring on their own development here. Some of that's going to require hangars, some of that's going to require more land, some of that, if you want the big iron, will require stronger runway taxiway hierarchy. Um, so anyway, all, all, all food to think about in the long term. Will Rogers, you're probably not going to steal anything from Will Rogers, but he can certainly steal some stuff from Wiley Post, or Sundance, or Shawnee, or eastern Oklahoma City that may be based at Westheimer or something like that.
Director, that's, that's kind of what we're seeing at the airport, is the majority of the businesses and traffic that are moving are coming from Sundance and Wiley Post. And so I think to speak to Eddie's question, you, how, just, how do we, what, what amenities can we provide that attracts that GA from Wiley to just keep, keep the business rolling in to Guthrie and Edmond?
Well, so.
You answered it, what?
Yeah, I mean, hangars is basically, I thought, hangar, hangars is the big driver. If you guys are built hangars, you know, they're, Wiley Post and Sundance are both full, and they're, they're full up. They, they built new hangars, uh, are building new hangars, private, private hangars and public hangars, um, but they're full. And, and that's the, the one thing that we have in shortage of is hangars. I mean, I can't say how many people post in social media on aviation towns, hey, you have a hangar, hey, you have a hangar. Um, you know, I know there, there are people that are based in El Reno that live in Oklahoma City, there are people that are based in Shawnee or Seminole that live in Oklahoma City. Um, there are people based in Purcell that live in Oklahoma City. Because there's no hangars at Westheimer, or Wiley Post, or Sundance. Now, some of that may be priced candidly, aviation or cheap bunch, I'll be, I'll be able to tell you about that. Um, if we can save a buck, we'll save a buck, and we'll travel point extra miles to save that buck. We will save a buck in rent to go spend that buck flying the airplane. Um, but not all of that is attuned to price. A lot of it's just because there's been no hangars. Uh, we've been building a lot of hangars, but those hangars haven't been here in the metro area. Um, they've been in El Reno, they've been in Shawnee, they've been in Seminole, they've been in Westheimer, Goldsby. Uh, and any hangars that we've built in and around a forty-five minute drive of a downtown pulse or downtown within the city can build up pretty darn quick.
So I propose we paint the runways orange and then try to steal the Stillwater.
Um, well, uh, so orange is not a good color in aviation for runways, typically runways are white. Um, no offense, I am Bill Risher, I have a good idea, as Kate alluded to. Um, so yeah, white and yellow, I don't know, we have a yellow.
That was a, that was a serious question.
Yeah.
Is, is Stillwater kind of in that group as well, or are they?
Um.
Is it sort of, you know, proximity is better there?
So you see, yeah, Stillwater, I know they have a waitlist, um, you know, Stillwater probably isn't going to build any new hangars for some time, they're, they're focused all of their capital on commercial service. Um, so yeah, if you can steal some from Stillwater, go for it. Uh, what is this, what's the drive this, in your, forty-five minutes? So, yeah, there's, there's nothing to say you wouldn't be able to get someone from Stillwater, um, to, to move down here. Um, they, you know, that, that's one of those things that in the general aviation crew, there are people that like being in tired airports and there are people that hate being in tired airports. And somebody may depart Stillwater because they hate being in tired commercial airport, there's also more security requirements to be at a commercial airport than at an aviation airport. So you could probably attract a few of those folks that are fed up with or don't like dealing with the security and northern tower, uh, issues at Stillwater. So, yeah, I think, I think you can certainly bring a few, I think, the, the most, most of the folks you're going to be attracting, if you, if you went and built five box hangars tomorrow, those those folks are going to come, they'll come to see that right here, they're, they're going to come to be, they're, they're going to be a new entrant into the field, or they'll have been based at Wiley Post, Sundance, Shawnee, Chandler, something like that. All right. If nothing else, I appreciate you guys having me today. Okay, all right, we'll move on to, uh, item number five. Presentation and discussion of capital improvement projects and funding options at Tinker Edmond Regional Airport.
May I introduce Toby Baker as well, thank you director for coming today. Our next speaker is an Oklahoma aviation lead and partner at Park Hill, the engineering consultancy firm, uh, that provides services for our airport. Uh, Mr. Baker has a civil engineering degree, uh, from OSU, he's a pilot, uh, holds a commercial pilot certificate for single and multi-engine aircraft. Uh, Toby's also a certified flight instructor. Uh, the best part about Toby is he actually bases his aircraft at our airport. And so, um, any day when he just wants to take off work and go fly his plane, he'll still get hammered with questions from me as he's kind of through the game. Uh, so appreciate him being here, and welcome Toby.
Thank you, Katie. Well, uh, one, one additional thing, uh, I actually grew up in Edmond, graduated from Edmond-Santa Fe High School, and my parents still live there today in the house that I grew up in. And for the past eighteen years, uh, my wife and I have lived just east of Guthrie in rural Logan County. So it's very gratifying to me to get to work on an airport that serves two communities and have very close personal ties, so that's, that's a lot. Uh, the first project that I wanted to talk about today is one that is ongoing right now, that I'll see later when we go out to the airport, and that's to realign the south portion of our parallel taxiway and install the criminal E lights and the entire parallel taxiway system. Um, but kind of the necessity of this project is over time, the FAA standards for taxiway from runway separation have changed. And so we've essentially been non-standard at our airport for, for twenty-plus years. Um, and for, for those of you that are familiar or look through the alert at the airport, the north portion of the parallel taxiway is at the correct spacing from the runway. That was done back in two thousand and six, so now we're essentially finishing what we started all the way back in, uh, two thousand and six. Kate spoke about the first off of the project, uh, earlier, but the, uh, the FAA is providing ninety percent of the funding, the state is providing five percent of the funding, and, and each community is providing two and a half percent of that project. Uh, the, the next project that we, uh, will start here within the next thirty days is to install over eight thousand feet of fencing on the east side of the airport. The purpose of this is essentially for deer exclusion. The past three years, we have had three deer strikes on the runway. That is obviously unacceptable from a safety standpoint, and, uh, so we're doing something a little bit creative on this. The cost of chain link fencing has continued to rise just out of sight. And so actually Director already has asked our firm, uh, a few months back, to develop a state standard specification, uh, for fencing at our general aviation airports that would be more cost-effective than traditional chain link fence. So we tried to think outside the box on that, and rather than think about, well, what type of fencing would best keep deer out, we looked at what are people using to keep deer in? So we're actually using a high tensile net wire fencing product that many commercial hunting ranches use to keep deer in, to keep deer off of the airport. So this will be one of the first reports in the state that has this type of fencing, and we're very excited about that. Um, the Congress changed the, the federal program a little bit this year such that FAA is providing ninety-five percent of the funding for this part of it, uh, so that each community, uh, again, does have a two and a half percent match of the market. Uh, the next project that we're beginning to design on, uh, we actually, Park Hill completed a schematic design for this project almost three years ago. Uh, there was a competitive program at FAA to provide funding for terminal buildings, and, uh, the city leadership at the time thought if we could go ahead and get a schematic design together and put that in our, our application package to try to, uh, compete for that funding that would give us a better, better chance than other reports. And while we weren't successful in getting that particular pot of money, we were ultimately successful in getting some progressively directed spending uh, for both a new terminal building and a portion of the new terminal apron pavement that we associate with it. So the new, the new building will be approximately seven thousand square feet, will have twenty-four hour access for pilots, uh, to a pilots lounge. Uh, the, the goal was to also include a restaurant space, which is something that, um, is, is fairly unique to airports. There's, there's a tremendous number in Oklahoma that have that, and it's very popular amongst the flying public. And I would say myself, will look for an excuse to fly to an airport that has a restaurant just for the sake of doing it. Um, and then the other goal that, that, uh, the city has had is to create an area where the public can come and congregate at the airport, for different events, classroom space, uh, to, to make, make a facility that is attractive to those to come to the airport that might not have otherwise. Uh, so this is just, this is the floor plan that was developed in the schematic design, uh, we will be continuing to refine this as we move into the next step of the design. Um, and you can see the restaurant space there, will have, uh, space for the airport manager, or airport director rather, and then also the FDA staff, uh, a large conference area, twenty-four hour accessible pilot's lounge, as you mentioned, and of course the traditional passenger waiting area. Then to talk about a few of the things that we have coming up, um, say long-term, some of them are actually still very, uh, very near-term. Uh, we have a lot of, of land on the west side of the airport that is currently, uh, primarily a state for development of additional hangars, as we mentioned previously. That is one of the needs that, that we would like to see met in order to generate additional revenue for the airport. Uh, one of the challenges in our current hangar development area is we don't have any sort of stormwater detention for that area. And any additional development is going to significantly, uh, impact existing stormwater runoff issues that we have that leave the airport on the west side. It's flooding that happens on, on division. Uh, so the, kind of prerequisite to doing any additional expansion on, on that west development area is to create some stormwater detention. Uh, so that is one of the short-term goals. Uh, another project that the Director already has mentioned is the construction of new taxi lanes on a similarly acquired property. We're currently in the middle of land acquisition on the southwest side of the airport, uh, that would give us some additional. Uh, that will give us some additional space for taxi lanes and then ultimately hangar development. Um, and then once that taxi lane is constructed, the, the goal will be to construct some city-owned hangars. Uh, as, as Director already has made a mention earlier, we currently only have one hangar on the entire airport that is owned by the city. Uh, the rest of those are just on a ground lease or we receive a few cents per square foot of the year. Uh, so the goal here would be to create some larger hangars that can be used by business aviation, potentially even have a business in the hangar, uh, for maintenance overhaul, et cetera. Uh, that would, that would generate some real revenue for the city by them owning those hangars. Uh, we, we talked a little bit about paying strength earlier. That is one of the challenges that for, for many, many years in discussions with the airport board, there's always been a desire to be bring larger aircraft in, to extend the runway. And really what would be a prerequisite to that is, is currently our, our concrete pavement is only six inches thick. And that will accommodate up to kind of a mid-sized business jet, a lot of the larger business jets, Gulfstream, et cetera, that we see in bigger airports like Wiley Post. They, they can operate at Guthrie, um, not solely because of the room and length issue, but our runway and taxiway are very compact. So, uh, this will probably be set a project that would face a progressively directed spending, just the sheer size of it. Because we would need the strength of the runway, all of the connector taxiways, the parallel taxiway, and then the, the terminal parking area. Uh, so that, that would certainly be a large hill decline, but we've seen it. Other airports, as Director already has shared, there has been that level of funding allocated to other airports in our state through, through Congress. And that's something that the back of our mind, want to continue to be mindful of and, and push. Uh, once we complete the land acquisition on the southwest side, we will then want to do a second round of perimeter fencing so that we can effectively have the entire airport fenced in. Uh, we, we stocked this first phase, uh, as we round the south end of the airport simply because it didn't make sense to construct fence on the current property line. In the middle of the land acquisition project, we'll have to take that down and relocate it here. Uh, so that, that is a little bit lower down on our CIP, but something that's still a priority so that we can completely control the movement of air, uh, across the, across the area. And finally, um, once we are able to acquire the land on the southwest side, we've discussed the construction of a second entrance to the airport. Uh, that's going to make, just from a terrain standpoint, a fairly large, uh, great container on the west side to, to have particular access to the next, uh, hangar development area, it's maybe logical to have a second entrance off of the perimeter. Um, so that's kind of the last thing that we actually will burn down on the CIP. So, if that, it certainly stands, or are there any questions about either the current construction project or any, any to add?
Yeah.
So the question got it, David. Always there is. Uh, the runway widening and strengthening, I'm just curious, roughly how much does that kind of thing cost for this?
So, yeah.
Twenty millions, tens of millions?
The, 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 yes, yes. The, the first, first rule of engineering is never do public math. The second rule of engineering is when the council says how much is it going to cost, the answer is somewhere between one bag and ten bags of money. Now, in, in all seriousness, uh, we, we were looking at somewhat of a broad brush number around twenty-five million dollars. And it will be, um, and five years ago, I think we would have said out of sight. But to have seen the congressional allocation that gave it to more, uh, Westheimer, Sherman, it's, it's not completely off the table, I think, because of that progression of direction. The, the other thing that's challenging for your strengthening is you also have to widen at the same time. So, like, we were doing a strengthening, Congressman advised, uh, if Congress passes their budget, has allocated thirteen million dollars for strengthening at their airport. But they're already widened up. They don't have to get wider. But to jump up to that next category of airport, you guys have some, some standards things you're going to have to fix that add to the more than just strength of the project. We're, we're seventy-five feet widened now. So, in order to justify for that next step of aircraft, we need to widen and, and, of course, all the runway lights. Uh, there are several problems that follow. We need to, 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 great question.
Any more questions for Mr. Baker, David?
How complicated is our CIP, Toby?
Uh, there is a graphic in your packet. I mean, we shouldn't put that up there. It is, uh, it is very, it is very interesting. You're a little bit unique because of the way the, the funding is presented. But I would say it's, it's a good problem to have. We have so many different flavors of money that are being allocated towards us that, um, it, it makes it a little bit challenging to reflect accurately on the CIP, but it's, it's a little bit unique, but a good problem to have.
Like, I can tell you, each year when we sit down with Randy and Ken and Kathy and Peyton, uh, we all say, okay, so what's this going to cost each city? Well, the answer is, I'm not sure. Uh, we, we think it's going to be this, but this is really a not-to-exceed amount. It's probably going to be less, won't be more. But we see those documents, but I ask Toby every year, help me understand why we don't know what this costs. And, and the short answer is all of the different funding mechanisms of sources.
And it's a moving target. And construction bids right now are, are very volatile. I mean, the, the construction market is revolting. I, there's, certainly not going down. Um, so we're, we're, we're trying to balance being conservative and making sure that we project high enough, uh, that, so that, so that Kathy can play. So, uh, but at, at the same time, uh, you know, we don't want to overestimate grossly so that everybody says, well, this is, this is easy. Uh, so there's, there's a healthy intention there. And, and then the way the different municipalities fiscal years don't line up with FAA's, don't line up with the state's, that always causes some challenges. Inevitably, we begin a project in one fiscal year when we haven't yet received the grant, because our grants are based on business. So, so we have to design a project, get it out to bid, and then turn in an application. So the cities are essentially fronting all of the designing costs in one fiscal year, only to be reimbursed ninety or ninety-five percent for those design costs in the next fiscal year. So where, where we draw the line in that cash flow process, it's a little bit. Uh, no, sir, no, thank you. Yes, well.
Something to do that. So in all of this conversation, we've talked about, talked about a lot of different things. One of the things that I haven't heard mentioned is if you expand this facility, one of the things you want to do is continue to make it an all-weather usable airport. And right now, I'd say that's probably one of our limitations, is the all-weather capability. If you have a longer runway, if you have a stronger runway, all of that's fine. But the business jets aren't going to come in here if you got a hundred-foot ceiling and a quarter-mile visibility, because they can't navigate to it. So can you speak to, I know yesterday's ground-based navigational facilities is one thing, and often those are very expensive if you get an instrument landing system. But what about today's technology? You know, we've got advances in, in GPS and all the different kinds of ways of navigating and getting around airspace and into airports. Have you seen anything? What would we have to plan? I know the, the amount of space needed to put in an instrument landing system is, that's more land acquisition.
So. Well, I don't, I don't need that, but technically, as part of the agenda, I don't know that we have a question and answer period built into this.
Would one of the council members like to ask what's important? I'll do whatever you guys want me to do.
Sure. Uh, I'll copy and paste that.
Thank you, listener. Um, so while you, first off, um, you're certainly not seeing FAA being in the business of installing new ground-based navigational systems at non-tower airports. Um, and Greg already straightened my wrong, but I think they have come out and just black and white said, we're not going to get new ILSs. If, if we have one somewhere, even with, for example, back in twenty-fourteen, we extended their runway twenty-four hundred feet and that necessitated relocating components of the ILS. FAA was agreeable to doing that. Mind you, the city got to pay for extending this amount of that out of their pocket. Um, but we're being looked at doing that at Bartlesville, for example. Bartlesville has a localizer, but they don't have a glide slope that is necessary to create a, a full instrument landing system. And FAA, as I've already said, we're not, we don't want another ground-based NAB that we have to, anything. Um, I would say that even now in, in the business jet community, the ability to fly vertically-guided GPS approaches, that is now there. It's not in all of commercial aircraft, but most, um, even semi-modern business aircraft are, are able to fly vertically-guided GPS approaches. And Greg from Rome, Peyton, I shouldn't know this, we had one mile visibility wall on both ends of the runway. I think we're down to three hundred feet, two fifty, two fifty. So, the, the only improvement that we could get would be to take that two fifty minimum descent height, so in front of non-pilots in the room. When, when you're flying in the clouds, FAA has a prescribed minimum altitude that you can descend to before you have to be able to see around. And there are different things that can help us improve, uh, how low aircraft can go before they see you. If you get to that altitude and you don't see the runway, then they have the next people to call this approach and go, go somewhere. Go to Wiley Post, go to Aurora Show, somewhere where the weather's better, or they have a lower instrument approach. But we're within fifty feet of the lowest possible, uh, decision height. So the only thing that we can potentially do is if we can find, um, what our controlling instructions are, if there's something that could be removed, we might be able to get that a little bit lower. But on the visibility side, the only way we're ever going to get below three quarters of a mile visibility is to have a full mouse. So on, on the north end of the airport right now, those of you that have been to Walmart at night, you may see some flashing strobe lights kind of running in a line. That's called an omnidirectional approach light system. It is a good tool and resource for pilots to help them find the runway in the clouds, but it actually doesn't do anything to lower FAA's, uh, visibility. So we talked about how, how foggy essentially can it be a pilot still be able legally come in and land. So, I, I would say, well, we're probably pretty close to where we're ever going to be with, without adding a mouse. Um, I, simply because the mouse requires twenty-four hundred feet of space beyond the end of the runway. I think that's going to be very challenging on the south end simply because of residents that are there. Um, on the north end, we, we already have the tallest mouse, or excuse me, OBL system in the state. Some of those approach lights are on seventy-foot towers. Uh, so it would be incredibly costly to look at replacing the OBLs with a mouse to, to try to keep over that visibility. But I think we're probably the closest we're ever going to get without significant additional investment. And, and on a true ILS, number one, we, we don't have, we, we don't have the width of an airport to put, um, a flight cell in. And that's a simple thing, right? And cars will try and be very, the flight cell critical area that around that piece of equipment is just potentially wide. If we would have to relocate industrial road again, and I just don't know what the juices are. Director, do you have anything additional on that, uh, overlooking?
No, I mean, it's, you, you're, you're within ten percent of the best that an airport's going to have. So, if you look at a, you look at a Durant that doesn't have ILS, that has GPS approaches that are comparable to what you guys have, they, they get G5s, G, you know, they, um, global, global five thousands all the time. So you're, you're within ten percent of the best non-ILS airports in the state. To me, as Toby mentioned, the juices are really worth the sweets from a, what, what it would take to get better. Uh, one thing I would say is you have OBLs on the north end, like you don't have three quarters of a mile of that right now. It's something we need to invest, meaning.
Right. What, what are our controlling, what's the controlling?
Construction there. Uh, because, I mean, you have an approach light system, it should discount you a quarter mile, um, on that side. There must be something out there, trees or I doubt it's terrain, but something that's controlling the, the being able not to go down to two hundred and three-quarter mile. Um, so, but that's, again, we can do that without significant investment potentially.
This is an obstruction.
Yeah, obstruction, kind of process. Uh, so it's not, you know, terrain or Walmart building.
Any other questions you'd like to weigh in?
Yeah, thank you for answering my questions.
Well thought out.
I'll do what I can. Any more questions?
I would love to, I'm an earthy business engineer. I'd love to talk about that discussion a little more. But, um, I was going to ask, I think maybe you answered it with that, but, and I hope we can see, you know, where these things are meant when we go out there. But long-term, long-term, it sounds like maybe the vision for this airport is not to make it a tower airport or make it bigger, but kind of stay in the niche we're in. Kind of that regional, um, footprint that we have-ish. Is that right? I mean, you don't have a.
I mean, if, if I were, if I were to be extremely careful with you, there's, there's very little chance to ever go longer. You're, you're going to have to, you're going to have to close the roadway to the south of the airport and scoop up fifteen to twenty homes if you ever want to go longer. Um, and then I say longer, but you can maybe get, you know, a couple hundred feet either way. If you want to go to six thousand or sixty-five or seven thousand feet, there's, there's no chance to do that here. Uh, so what you need to be is the best, you know, five thousand fifty, five hundred foot runway you can be, serve the traffic that you can serve. The nice thing about MRO activities, if you could, you know, we, if you could get an MRO business in here, you could, in theory, bring G5 MRO actions here if you strengthen your runway a little bit. Because when you're bringing an aircraft in for MRO, it's not full capacity weight. It's, it's been brought in light, it's taken off light. So, you know, that's where, you know, I always encourage people, like, look, look at what your capabilities are. Go after something that's within your capability set. And if your capability set is five thousand, thirty-five hundred foot runway, you, you could be a very populous based aircraft airport in business aviation, aircraft business airport. And so that's what I would focus, focus your attention on, is trying to get as much land around the airport as you can. Land's never going to go, land's not going away and it's never getting cheaper. Um, so we're working on that right now with a couple acquisitions. Get that developable land around the airport and do what you can to grow the airport community with what you have. Commercial service, throw that idea away. Uh, you know, seven thousand foot runway, throw that idea away. It's just, go, go focus your attention on things that are actually achievable as opposed to what I call high-in-the-sky ideas.
We have quite a few callers a week, uh, that will call up and ask, are American Airlines flying this apartment? Or what they do with their luggage for tonight? And that's, that's one of the fun aspects of general aviation, uh, a lot, a lot of misunderstandings.
Any more questions for Mr. Baker that I would like to ask? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, earlier in introductions, I, I called our city clerk the court clerk, so I'd like to correct that. Uh, it's my first joint session. I didn't want to be nervous and, and embarrass myself. Well, that certainly happened. So. Uh, I did want to say, uh, so I'm a movie producer. And, uh, before that, I was in the video production. I got pulled into that again. Um, with a company that sells private jets. And I went to Missouri for the first production meeting and shoot. And they're all pilots, of course, no surprise. And I was so honored and I took just a lot of pride in the fact that when I, they found out I was from Guthrie, uh, all of them, they just said, uh, oh my God. They were all excited because apparently it's unanimous in the aviation fraternity, if you'll call it, that, uh, Oklahoma, I guess Missouri, Arkansas, Kansas, Guthrie Edmund is known as the nicest airport. And I, I loved hearing that. It made me feel good for the, the entire meeting, the entire, entire production. So I want to thank everybody in this room for, you know, making that the, um, standard for everybody and, uh, making that something known. So did you, did you guys know that they thought of it like, uh, I guess, were the, the Harvard of airports from municipalities, I guess? It felt really good here, I guess, so I appreciate it. Um, well, I, I did all the work, but do you want to join, uh, turn?
Are we ready to adjourn?
Yeah, are we any more, or are we business or?
I believe we're ready to adjourn, and we have, I would say, the airport next, so.
But we didn't need to adjourn there?
Yes, yes. You'll need to adjourn here to, to further business drive number five.
On both sides of it?
Yes, yes. You have four on this for us.